And you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'd like to call tonight's meeting, our work session, to order this evening. We'll start off with recognizing members of the administration that are present.
Mayor Jamie Slutes.
Here.
Safety Service Director Renee Baker.
Here.
Chief Counsel Earl Wise, Jr.
Here.
City Engineer Alex Pitts.
Here.
Director of Development Ted Hearn King.
Here.
Fire Chief Matthew Heck.
Here.
Income Tax Budget Director Lori Katagidis Boron.
Here.
And Parks and Rec Director Steve Pedro.
Here.
Is there anyone from administration I missed? That's it. President Protam.
Thank you, Diane. Let the record show, eight members of council are present. Councilwoman Markham is absent this evening. Start off with Community Development, Councilwoman Creamer.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. I have nothing for Community Development.
Okay, thank you. Economic Development, Councilwoman Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. I have no new business for Economic Development today.
All right, thank you. Health, Welfare, and Building Regulations, Councilwoman Cunningham.
I believe you all received, oh, yes, Mr. President Protam, thank you. I believe all of you have received notice of a public hearing, which will be held on Wednesday, in front of you, the applicant in his appealing Masslin City Ordinance Section 1177.01, which requires a rear yard setback of 35 feet in an R3 zone district. And anybody on council that wishes to can attend this public hearing. That's it tonight.
All right, thank you. For the record, I don't have a copy of that, so...
I sent it by email.
Okay.
To the council members.
All right, thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Harvick Smith.
Hold on, did you have a question? No, I just... I thought there were actually a few variances.
That's just the one that's in Ward 1. The other two are in Ward 2.
And I've received the one from Ward 2 as well.
All right, Parks and Rec?
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregg. I have one item this meeting. It's to allow the Director of Parks and Rec to advertise for received seal bids to enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder. Upon approval, the Board of Controls to replace the maintenance equipment at the Legends Golf Course. This was voted on at the Recreation Board Meeting on August 20th, and it was a 5-0-4. Director Pedro, can you explain, Council, what this is for?
Hello, everybody. This is to replace our maintenance equipment at the Legends, the mowers that we use down there. There, we started a five-year lease. Five years ago, it's up in February, and it's time to replace that. The benefit of leasing is the two-to-three-year maintenance agreement that we get when we do this, and it actually saves us money.
Did anyone have any questions? Councilwoman Gregg?
Thank you, Councilwoman... Brian, sorry.
Harvey.
Harvey Smith. Were we replacing all the mowers at once?
No, no, six of them.
Okay.
Six of them.
How many do we have?
About nine. We have some that we've had for quite some time. We're still using them.
Okay.
So, but these are the main T-mowers, Greens mowers, Fairway mowers, and Rough mowers.
And they're all up, their lease is up on these?
Yeah, in February, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did anyone else have any questions?
Thank you, Director Pedro.
You're welcome.
That's all I have for Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Police and Fire, which is Chair, Councilwoman Markham is the chairman. Anybody else on the committee have anything? Mr. Lewis?
I believe we have in front of us the ordinance that's looking at the contracts for the Fire Department. Is that correct?
It's in Rules and Courts, though.
Oh, that's in Rules and Courts. So then we have no business. Thanks for doing that for me, John. Never mind, no business.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, Public Utilities and Environmental, Councilwoman Brian Huth.
Thank you, President Protam. I have nothing this evening.
All right, thank you. Rules and Courts and Civil Service, that's my committee, and yes, we do have legislation before us. Please prepare an ordinance requesting City Council of the City of Masslin, Ohio to consider and vote to accept the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Masslin, Ohio, and Masslin Firefighters IAAF Local 251. So I spoke to Mr. Wise regarding this. We will have a executive session on next Monday to discuss this. I have no further comments on it at this point. Any questions or discussion? All right, thank you. We'll move on to Streets, Highways, Traffic, and Safety, Councilman Packley.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. I have two items for this evening. The first item for Streets and Highways, please prepare an ordinance to authorize the Director of Public Safety and Service to enter into a contract with American Structure Point for the preliminary design and right-of-way scope on the State Route 21 and Lake Avenue Corridor Project. Mr. Pitts, could you please come up and try to help us understand what this all means? Yes, Mr. Wise.
Why he comes up, I believe, Mr. Pitts, there's a couple pieces in finance that probably coincide. So if it's okay with you and your committee to go ahead and address this all at once for the convenience.
That would be perfect to save everyone time.
Good evening, Council. Yes, so this is just to enter into contract with American Structure Point for the design of the Lake Avenue and State Route 21 intersections. The intersections in question that we're looking at is State Route 21 and Lake Avenue and Lake Avenue and First. Unfortunately, according, in accordance with the NEPA process, the National Environmental Policy Act, I cannot go into detail regarding the different designs that we are looking at. However, that will be coming soon with the public involvement portion of the project. We have to do that anyway, similar to what we did with the, most recently, the Main and Tremont Roundabout, for example. So because these are federal dollars, we have to abide by federal guidelines, and the NEPA process has to be followed. And American Structure Point is going to be helping us with that environmental process as well. So you will be seeing something soon, as long as we go under contract with American Structure Point. However, I just can't share anything at this time regarding the design, so...
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
So council wouldn't be able to see the proposed design until after we were to approve it?
You're able to see the design as soon as we have authorization to go under the environmental process, to basically put it out to everyone through public involvement. So it's basically to show that we're not showing any biases towards different designs and things like that. We're just putting it out there in an unbiased fashion to where you can then make your comments and change design if deemed necessary at that time. It's like a 30-day period, I believe, is what we did with Main and Tremont Roundabout, but it's just in accordance with the NEPA process. It's just what we have to do, so...
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Lewis?
So the company, American Structure Point.
Structure Point.
Mm-hmm.
How did we get to them?
So they did the traffic analysis and the survey and everything for us for the pre-preliminary. We're on a very expedited schedule with this project. We even had to push it back a year, so it's actually scheduled for fiscal year 2028. So we did write it in the budget for this year for the pre-preliminary, I want to say. And American Structure Point was selected through the QBS process, and now we're trying to go into final contract with them for the full design. However, the first part of it is the preliminary, environmental and the right-of-way and everything and the full-blown survey. However, we need council's authorization to enter into contract with them, so...
So we went through QBS. That's how we have found them.
Mm-hmm.
And that is federal guidelines that dictate we use the QBS process.
Mm-hmm.
So we have them, so now we need them to do the environmental study and design, and that's what this $400,000...
Correct.
...is for.
Yep.
So there's two transfers where we'll be taking money out of essentially Main and Tremont Roundabout and placing it into this project, because I'm assuming the Roundabout project's going to get pushed until next year, so you need the money now instead of keeping it locked up.
Correct, yep.
And so the $400,000 gets us the start of the design work that we'll then be able to see before final approval.
Correct. And then on top of that, next year, there will also be the second portion of the contract that we'll be putting in the budget for the additional design work. So this is just the preliminary, like I said, the preliminary design of it, and then final design will be next year, so...
Do you know the $400,000 that we're transferring, were these also federal dollars or are these local dollars?
These were all local, yeah.
So then, once we transfer these local in, what kind of federal dollars will we be anticipating for the Lake project? Do we know?
So the total amount of federal dollars that we have currently is $4.15 million. We're going after an additional two, which the deadline for the safety funds for the additional two is this Friday. So to answer your question, $6.15 million at those two intersections.
I'm assuming there would still be some more local committed now?
There will be, yep, during the construction phase.
So are we looking at like a 90-10, 80-20, or you don't know yet?
Oh, let me go back to the office, and I'll give you that exact... I just don't want to put a number out there, because, yeah, but it's definitely in between there, in between the 80-20, 90-10, so...
Mrs. Harvick?
This project will actually not start until we build it until 2028?
Yes.
The Roundabout and Tremont...
Tremont and Main, when will that start?
That'll be next year.
Next year?
Yeah.
26, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr., I do have a question. So are you allowed to elaborate on what you perceive as some of the potential problems with those two intersections? Are you allowed to discuss, or what you'd like to see improved upon in those?
I think I can safely say that the main concern is congestion. So the design is to help alleviate congestion between the two intersections. That's a big one. And by increase, and by mitigating that, we're increasing the level of service, the way that intersections operate quite substantially. So I'd say that's the number-one concern, and safety as well, hence the safety funding. So those two are what we're kind of targeting as far as scope-wise for that project, so...
Now, I always see that it backs up on the 21 for those people going northbound, and they get stuck out. And I've expressed to you in the past that the turn lanes on First Street and Lake Avenue will give an arrow even if no one's in the turn lane, and, which is problematic, because then you have to wait longer. So if those can be remedied, that would be terrific for all involved at that intersection. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Gregg?
Thank you, Councilman Packley. I thought I had, our concern is pedestrian and especially bike traffic at that intersection. Right now, it's dangerous for a bike or a pedestrian to cross there, because there's so many lanes, traffic moving so quickly, so much congestion and so forth. And with Ernie's being, the trailhead being right there, I'm sure there's a ton of bike traffic going through there. Do you think that this project will address that and mitigate it and alleviate it?
I can say that we have definitely looked at that.
That's been a consideration?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Packley. So I would, I mean, is it clear that you may have already seen like a rough draft of what this preliminary design process will consist of, correct?
I have.
Okay, that's, all right, sounds good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Pitts.
Thank you.
And I have one more item for this evening. This one is please repair resolution whereas Masslin City Council is in support of the proposed plans of the West Stark Chamber of Commerce and its partners to revitalize the alley known as Postal Place northeast of 59 Lincoln Way East into a space to be enjoyed by the community and attract others to downtown Masslin. So I think Mrs. Busby's here to talk about, she had spoken before about this, if you would like to...
Does she have questions or...
My first question is, we, I would, this is going to be semantics.
Mm-hmm.
I think we need to evaluate if this is the right committee.
Yes, I, initially, I thought it would probably fall under Community Development.
I would think it'd be more of a, well, it's not a park, so it can't go to Parks and Recreation.
No.
I would think it'd be more Community Development or a committee as a whole.
But I think from the street's perspective, because to take it from an alleyway, which is a city street, more or less, and they convert it into a not-quite-park, I think that's where it fell into the...
But the stated purpose in the resolution is to attract people downtown, not...
Which is not a roadway.
Correct. So I would think it would be more under Jill. That's just my opinion. I know that's a semantics, but...
Yes, I was wondering about that also, but I did check the rules, and it said under Streets and Highways Committee, streets, alleys, that's why it fell under Streets.
So...
But it can go under Committee as a whole.
Do we have to vote on something to convert the alley into something else first, and then whatever that's in, then?
It only stays an alley, under the plan.
Oh, okay.
Under the plan, it remains an alley. It is just barricaded so that it is not a thoroughfare. But if, yeah, so it remains an alley, and it remains according to the plans of the project, and Debbie can speak more, but all of this space remains property of the city. So, but I do agree that Community Development, or the committee as a whole, if we do committee as a whole. Is there time to redraft it before Monday, or is that, does it put it back another two weeks?
Just shift it and have committee, whichever committee that you would want to be under be the committee that signs off of it tonight.
Who decides what committee we want it under?
Ultimately, Mr. Slater can weigh in and place it.
Okay. Mrs. Creamer, you take over.
Good evening. So do you have questions, or do you want me to explain the project?
It's better to explain it briefly for people who are hearing it for the first time.
Okay. What the project is, is a couple years ago, a group of us got together, and we wanted to know what our Umbrella Alley was. And if you're, those of you that are familiar with Umbrella Alley in Lewisville, it is an alley that they took, and they hung umbrellas in it, they painted the walls, they updated the alley, and it has become a real economic driver for that particular community. Not only is the alley updated and it looks nice, but it has also been on the cover of various magazines throughout the state of Ohio. They used that alley to bring people to Stark County. And if you look on Facebook, too, you'll see posts where people will say, hey, we're coming to Lewisville to see Umbrella Alley. Where's there to eat? What else is there to do? We're coming to that particular community. So a group of us decided, what was our alley? And in doing our research, we realized that Masslin was, had deep history with regards to transportation. So not only the cow catcher, we also have the trains, we have buses, and different things, different parts of transportation were created and were designed in the city of Masslin. And then in addition, we also realized, found that Margy Vought, who is our local historian, found that there is a bridge laying in the mud owned by Stark Parks at Crystal Springs Park on Erie. We went and looked at the bridge, we've talked to Stark Parks, and they have agreed to give the community, whoever that happens to be, whether it's Masslin Main Street, whether it's the city, that particular bridge to use within the alley. We didn't know exactly how that bridge was going to be used, and what we did is we reached out to a local architect, John Picard, and John designed the alley, the initial rendition of the alley. We then took it to Arts and Stark, and we took it to them, because we wanted to see what their, what their thoughts were on the initial design. And they said that the initial design, while nice, wasn't what they called Instagrammable, didn't have any Instagrammable moments. So the whole point of this is not just to highlight the history that we have in Masslin, but also to bring people to the community. And if we didn't have an Instagrammable moment, whereas people are taking pictures, or putting it out on social media, and getting others to go, wow, where is that? Well, I want to, I want to go check that out. So we went back to the drawing board, we didn't, John Picard did, and he created more of a 3D-type alley. Nothing's touching the walls, everything is bolted or connected to the alley itself. There's a train, there's a canal boat, there is a bus, and these items can, children or adults can get inside of them, they're not, they're 3D, and then they can, they can take pictures. So that's what our Instagrammable moment is, is, are the 3D parts of that alley. And then the bridge is not, is going to be used as, it's going to go down the middle of the alley, and it's going to be up on, I don't know what it's called, pylons, I guess, about this high, four or five feet high, and then the bridge will be on top of that. We wanted to make sure the bridge, while it's going to be used as a decorative piece within the alley, is going to be wide enough and high enough so that a truck can get through should some type of repairs need to be done to the area underneath the alley. So, yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Thank you, Mrs. Creamer. Could you explain the historical connection of the bridge to Masslin? I thought, I think, first of all, I think this is a tremendous idea, but I thought that was really specifically interesting, and you explained it before.
The, the bridge is a cantilever bridge, and I don't want to, I don't know the history well enough to explain it, I'm not, but I do know, Holly?
Joseph Davenport is the inventor of the cantilever bridge, and he built several in Masslin. There was one at Oaknall Park that, over where the tow path goes now, or the bike trail. And so this one was at one time in Canal Fulton somewhere, Margy can tell you exactly where, but it was in use. So for now, it's the two giant iron trusses that will...
And the parts between it or not?
Yeah, they'll flank the alley, and then the center of our alley will be made to look like it is the creek or the tusk, to bring in that Ohio Erie Canal trailways along with it. Because again, 172 Lincoln Way and the Ohio and Erie Canal are the two oldest transportation paths in our country, and we happen to be at the intersection of both of them. So that's a very historic spot for us as well. And with our 200th bicentennial, and I know Debbie was going to touch on this, and America's 250 coming up in '26, now is the time for us to catapult this and move it forward and really build on it.
Build on it. And Joseph Davenport also invented or created, designed the cow catcher, which is that part of the train, trains that used to basically push the cows off the track. So that's going to be highlighted, highlighted in the alley as well.
So I have a question. So the resolution in front of us is just for council. If approved, we support this. Do you have a timeline that you...
Our original goal was to have it completed and have a ribbon cutting in August of 2026. We don't, I mean, we hope to be done by August 2026, but we have been, it's been taking us a while to get to this point. So just, you know, a few things have gotten in the way, just trying to get approval so that we can make this project happen. So our August is still our goal, I, and we hope to make that, but not 100% sure.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. This is more of a general comment, not necessarily a question. I know this has been in the works for a while, and that we've had different parties weigh in with support or concerns, and I do know that some of the concerns that have been brought up are legal in nature. So my one recommendation I would make that, as allowable by ORC, we might want to go into an executive session to discuss what those might be before we make a determination. Because I, too, like the project, but I would like to want to hear more about that, and I don't know how much that conversation should be had on the floor, and how much of it needs to be had using executive session. That we'll have to consult with our legal representation to know.
Thank you, Mrs. Creamer. Question, I know that there was a funding piece.
Yes.
So did you guys hit the goal?
We're working on the funding right now. The proposed estimated cost for this project is around $500,000. So to date, we have raised through grants $165,000 of that. We have stopped on grant applications, just because we didn't want to apply for any more grants until we got two thumbs up that the project could go ahead. We also, part of that, part of, I guess, the funding would also be in-kind donations, in-kind, just like John Picard is not charging us to do the architecture. We're looking, GND Fab and Welding will not be charging us for part of picking up the bridge and doing the work that is needed to get the bridge in the right condition to put in the alley. So we're also going to be looking for those kinds of in-kind donations through various companies throughout the city of Masslin to help with that $500,000 price tag.
Sounds good. I think, what, last time we were here, you were at like 35, maybe 40?
Right, yeah, so we, yeah, we got $100,000 donation, so, just in one grant, and this particular person might go higher, so we're pretty excited.
All right.
Yes.
Do we have a name for it? You know how the other place is Umbrella Alley? Did we come up with snaz, something snazzy?
We don't. We told the person that if they wanted to donate more, we'd be happy to name it after them, so we don't have, we don't have a name for it. I mean, we have a name for it that we're using for the grant applications, but that's not, it's called Wayfarer's Way, because we had to name it something in order to apply for all these grants. But that is just really for the grant applications, not set in stone for the final name of it.
No. Anyone else?
That'd be good.
Mr. Lewis?
I'd like to hear from the administration if they have any comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Slute?
Good evening, Council. Thank you. I would like to say that we are in support of the project. However, with a big project like that and some questions about the liability and other issues, I turn to our Law Department to address some of these concerns. So that's where the hang-up is right now. There are some questions on the legalities of some of these issues, so, but we do support it. It's a great idea. It's a great idea to bring people downtown, and, which is what we want to do. But there are some questions that we're waiting on answers. You know, our Law Department, Assistant Prosecutor E.J. Wise, he's kind of been steerheading this project on our behalf, so you have to understand, when a project comes forward like this, and even though we think it's a great idea, you know, when we have questions, we go to our Law Department. And if our Law Department has questions about that, we can't move forward on that, because then my office and all of you would be responsible if, if they had some thoughts that it wasn't a good idea, or some issues that they were concerned with. So that's the holdup. I just wanted to share that with you. I think it's a great idea. I think it's, it would bring people downtown. But then, you know, Umbrella Alley and what we're trying to do are two different projects. I mean, we're talking about a 15-ounce umbrella hanging on some lines, or however they have those elevated, compared to a couple-ton bridge. So there are some concerns with that, so. If you had questions for Attorney Wise, I'm sure you can ask him those questions without getting into the weeds with it, but the administration's for it, I'm sure the Law Department's for it, but we do have some questions that we need answers to before we move forward.
So are there any other type structures within the state that we could reach out to those municipalities or cities that have something similar to, you know, this, some type of structure, that we can kind of, they can help assist, assist us and navigate through their process?
I have not done any research like that.
And would the Law Department be doing that type of research to see if other cities have something? Anyone else?
I guess my question is, do we ask Mr. Wise to come up now, or is this an executive session at a further date?
I was going to speak with Mr. Gregg after the meeting regarding the executive session, since we're going to have an executive session next week also regarding the fire contract, so that was kind of my, my thought.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all with this?
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Kramer. That leaves us with Finance with Councilman Lewis.
Yes, the first piece we have in front of us, Mike, I'm going to make a recommendation that we just don't move forward yet. It's the Police Repair Legislation. We're all further future notice and publications required under ORC. This was, I believe, a Seth Markham drafted piece, and without him being here, I think it's probably more appropriate that we just wait till our next work session so that he can explain the law behind why he thinks this is appropriate.
Sounds good.
The next piece we have here is Police Repair Legislation To Make Certain Transfers Within The 2025 Appropriations From The General Fund For The Year Ending 12/31/25. Reducing Economic Development Salary By $27,000. Reducing Hospital Eye Dental By 8. PRS By $4,400. Medicare Economic Development By $700. And we're basically placing those all into building salaries. And this is to pay code enforcement employee from the Building Department. Mayor Sluice, if you have a representative that you'd like to come forward to explain this further?
Good evening, council. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah. Just, what's going on?
So basically, we're just transferring money from the economic development line to the building line for code enforcement. In the spring, when we hired two new code enforcement officers, they were hired under the Building Department. When prior, when we hired Harry Sullivan and Dan Fichter, we hired them under Community Development the year before. They were always paid from the General Fund, but they were listed under Community Development. Mr. Sullivan left for another opportunity. When we hired his replacement this spring, the mayor wants everybody kind of under the building line to keep them the same. So we're phasing employees over to the code enforcement classification under the Building Department. So what we're doing is we're just taking the money that we had budgeted for them through economic development to the building account for the remainder of this year.
So there's no increase, there's no new employees, it's simply a change of where they're aligned?
Correct.
Any questions? Ms. Harwick Smith?
Thank you, Councilman Lewis. So is this, so next year, it'll be all under the Building Department? Or the fines and things that they're collecting and the revenue they're generating from the new laws passed, is that able to go, does that go into their budget, which is used for like salaries and stuff, or where does their budget come from?
Their budget, the Building Department budget comes from the General Fund, and I believe there's a building fund. The fines that you folks passed here recently are going to go into the, I believe it's the 12/20 foreclosure fund. So it's not necessarily that general or building fund, but it is a fund that is earmarked for the purpose of code enforcement activities.
So all the fines, like on grass and everything, that all goes into the foreclosure?
The grass fines assessments, the fine, the grass assessments go into the General Fund currently. So yes, that is used to offset building and code enforcement-related activities. The fines that will be collected will, or the fines that will be collected will be deposited into the foreclosure fund, but they will be used for code enforcement purposes. So there's different funds that can assist and support that department.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. The next piece I have here, these are all transfers now. We already kind of discussed these. The first one is the Main and Tremont Roundabout Reduced By $152,000, Putting the Service in Contracts For The Lake Avenue That We Already Discussed. The next one is Reducing OPWC Projects By $250,000, Putting the Service in Contracts, again, to help take care of that cost for the Lake Avenue design. This next one, Mr. Gregg, I am opting to not sign this one at this time, unless someone has some additional information. It's from the Masslin Municipal Courts, Reducing Special Court Equipment By $60,000 and Putting It Into Special Court Service and Contracts. It's to pay service and contracts invoices through December 31, 2025. Given the amount, I just would like to know what those services and contracts are before I sign off on it. It's not that I necessarily have an objection to what they're doing, it's just there's no details. And I don't believe there's a representative here that can speak to it. So Ms. Roland, maybe you could reach out to the courts and ask them for a little bit more information to share with us, that we can move this forward maybe next Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And the last one's related to some overtime. The Fire Department moving $160,000, or reducing their salary by $160,000, their gas and oil by $15,000, and placing those funds into fire comp and fire overtime. Any further questions? That is all we have for Finance, Mr. Gregg.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis. I'm glad you mentioned, our next meeting will be Tuesday, not Monday. So Tuesday for the, because of the holiday. Anything else for the meeting tonight? Seeing none, I declare us adjourned. Thank you this evening.